All right, we're live. Great. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Tremendous audience here. I'd like to open this officially called order, the sports selectmen meeting for Tuesday, May 21st, 2019. Please rise and join me in a pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Any correspondence other than what we already have, okay? Moving on, public comments. No comments from the public. We have one set of minutes to approve. I'll undertake a motion to approve the minutes of the regular BOS meeting of May 7th, 2019.
So whom?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Questions? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. First elections report, I'm going to make it very brief because we have a very long agenda tonight. I don't think it's going to be as time-consuming as we think, but we've got a lot to cover. I don't have much to let you in on, other than teacher's pension is still on the block, it's still up for consideration in Hartford. Tolls, interestingly enough, may be in trouble. They get shoved to the back burner and the governor may take them off the budget discussion for the regular session and make a special session out of it. And then there are some other things that are still pending, and that's really all I have. You guys have any other?
Anything about marijuana thing, is that on the back burner again?
That is also in trouble. So it's, I, most people are giving it less than 50 percent chance of going through this year. So, any comments?
I comment, you want to hear about the legislature.
All right. There's a bunch of things we need to add to the agenda, so I'm going to make a motion first that we, well, let me explain what I want to do with this. There are currently eight items that are up for consideration for capital non-recurring. I don't expect we're going to vote on more than three of them, which would be in the current fiscal year, not the fiscal year coming up, but I want to put all of them on the agenda so we open up discussions on them as we move forward, because we're going to have to do some at this meeting and then some at our next meeting in the first week of June. So my first motion is to add consideration of Bethel Police Department portable radio purchases from capital non-recurring, and that would be new business item number nine. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? You okay with that, Rich?
Yeah, I said aye.
Oh, okay. You guys will have to forgive me. My allergies are acting up. I can't hear anybody unless they're standing right next to me. You're in a good position, and you're not.
No, no.
The right side's worse. Number two, I'll make a motion to add to the agenda consideration of resolution authorizing participation in the National Purchasing Cooperative, which is a buy board, and this is being requested by the school district. That would be new business item number 10.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Item number three, I'll make a motion to add consideration of new water service, South Street Firehouse exterior and interior installation of plumbing. That would be from capital non-recurring.
Second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries.
That would be number 11.
That would be, actually, item number 11. And the last item to add is under new business number 12, consideration of the A&amp;E Services Group contract, and this has to do with small cities money and loans to seniors. So I want to add that as number 12, and that's just approval of a contract that Marty has already reviewed. So is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor? Aye? Aye? That carries. Let me show you what I have done here. I'm going to see if I can make this thing bigger, blow it up so we can, so you guys can see it. Oh, that might be too much.
For me, it's not.
All right, can you guys see that? All right, I'm going to highlight this spot right here, if you can see where the cursor is. Do you need to have that a little bit bigger? Okay. I do, saw it. Let me, bless you.
Bless you. Salute.
Bless you.
Thank you.
There you go.
Better?
Yeah.
Okay, so, as you can see on this chart, we've got all these things on the agenda. I've given you copies of what was originally in the presentations when we started the budget process many months ago. So here, the original capital recommendations was two Class 8 trucks, one medium-duty truck, Bethel High School track resurfacing, and then the VHS boiler replacement. And if you remember, the only thing that made it onto the ballot was the boiler replacement. The other three items were remanded over to capital non-recurring. Then we have the capital non-recurring that the Board of Selectmen presented, and that starts with this, I'll show you that one. This list, so it starts with large format scanner for the land use departments, the highway trucks, band uniforms, just the general town hall maintenance account, security systems and so on. I didn't put everything on this list, what I wanted to do tonight is to get a few things that are seasonally rather urgent in front of you tonight for your consideration. So if you look at the, if you look up at the screen, I'm going to color code this, make it easier to see, we currently have a balance of 300, a little bit, a little bit over 358,000. And this is not only the current fiscal year, but this is unextended funds for prior fiscal years, where, and what this is, is they were capital non-recurring allocations, and then when the bids came in, the bids came in lower than the estimate, or things were canceled and it was never used. So this is, this is the amount of money that we have to sweep into capital non-recurring, and this is available for use for the balance of the current fiscal, yeah, current fiscal year.
And this still has to go before Board of Finance?
Yeah, it does. It does. So this is not going to go before, up to the Board of Finance until their meeting in June, which is the second week, but there's some things in here that seasonally I would like to get going and make sure that they can, they can be utilized. This is the number that was allocated for the upcoming fiscal year, and so to go back to these, I wanted to make a recommendation to you out of all these things, so I'm going to kind of make a recommendation out of order, that we take one of the Class 8 trucks, the Bethel High School track resurfacing, which has to be ordered pretty soon if it's going to be available for the school season, and the VenTrak mower, which, I don't know if you've looked at your lawn or the woods, but things are growing pretty darn fast, so if we're going to get, if we're going to use that thing, it's something that the Park and Rec Department can use now. Then, I don't think we are in a position to vote on any of these things tonight, but I put some other recommendations coming, going into the next fiscal year, including the animal shelter, the masks, radios for the fire department, the digital radios for the police department. And I want to point out something, you'll see that there's an email in your packet from Captain Pugner. They had anticipated spending $46,000 per year for three years to replace the radios and stages. He received a quote last week that they could buy all of them for 112,000, and then they would be done. They would be, they would replace all the radios at one time, they wouldn't have to worry about parts, compatibility issues, and it would be a significant savings if we want to go that way. Then, also in June, we could discuss the medium-duty truck and the band uniforms. But my, my recommendation tonight is that we approve, and forward to the Board of Finance, that one heavy truck, track resurfacing, and the VenTrak mower, so that we can, so our crew can move ahead with that. And I do have a correction on this, because there's an actual bid that was issued on the truck, and it came in at this number right here. So that was significantly lower.
The 180?
Yeah. We had it in as an estimate of 205,000. The bid came in at 100, call it 181,000, but the number is 180,585. And then the VenTrak mower, I mean, what did you say the actual cost is? It's 28,000, and then there's a setup fee? I'm sorry?
28,407.
Is it?
43 cents. Let's leave it at 7.
408. Okay. All right, so, so I wanted to, I mean, we don't have a motion on the floor, but I wanted to open up discussion. This is my recommendation to my colleagues, that we move forward with the current fiscal year budget.
On the track, is that a bid price, or is that a?
It's a quote that I got, but it's, it is a year old, so I'm just wondering if we should maybe put a little more in there, just in case there's an overage of some point.
And I think the estimate that Mark had at one point was 133.
Yeah, because the one I got from Yvonne, and that was dated in March of 2018, was 125. So.
If we, if you bump that up to 135, how's that do with the budget?
Yeah, that still leaves your money left.
Okay, so you can, you can see right here.
Just a little room, yeah, that's good.
Okay, so we can, we can move down, move down the truck, move up the track to make sure there's a cushion in there, and put in the actual price for the VenTrak, and there's still 14,000 that will carry over to the next fiscal year. That sound good?
Yeah.
Okay. Any objections, Paul?
Going back to that truck, this is the heavy-duty?
Yeah.
That's one of the big ones.
Yeah, it's a Peterbilt. That's your favorite one.
I know, I understand that.
They were asking for three.
Well, no, they were asking for three, yeah, three and three they were asking for. No, I understand the need for the truck.
Yeah.
The track, we're sort of obligated to do that. What was the number you had for the track?
I think Mark had a number at one point of 133, so I would, I would say the 135 is a better estimate.
It gives you a cushion if anything is, like, there's an extra wear-out area.
Right, there's a, gives you a little contingency.
Yes, yeah.
And do we, with that, since we're right now, start of the paving season, do we, do we have any assurances that they can finish it before school starts?
No, there is no, but it's not a long process, it's not like a long process.
Is it a repaving, or just a recoding?
It's a recoding. I, I, let me just look up the email I got today from the gentleman. It says, it takes 10 good working days, and then two days to put the lines down. So we're talking like a two-week window to do it. The problem is, is they already have things scheduled, so we would have to do it in September, or in October, and do it in a two-week window. But it's not a six-week process, it's only a two-week process, because it's a resurfacing.
It's basically nothing but a coating.
Yep.
It's not a, it's not a paving.
It's not, there's no paving, there's no ripping up of the old, of the old surface, it's cleaning it, it's probably fixing any holes or anything that might be there, and then resurfacing in new fresh lines. So, it's a, it's a 12-day process, so.
Okay, and here, your VenTrak mower, is that available immediately?
Yeah, probably, yes.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Where are you getting it, from vessel power?
Yeah, they have, they have a state contract bid, so.
I have to tell you, I hired a landscaper to cut some brush in my backyard that I had been working on for, I don't know, three or four weeks, you know, with a trimmer, hand trimmer, this, this big area, and he happened to show up with a VenTrak, and it was done in 30 minutes, just chopped right through it, like magic. You can, you, I'm told that your guys can do in an hour what would normally take a crew of three men, two or three days to do. Okay, so.
All right, I think that's reasonable.
All right. All right, so I'm going to put a motion on the floor to, that we approve and forward to the Board of Finance for their consideration, the purchase of one Class 8 truck for Highway Department, in the amount of 180,858 dollars, resurfacing a Bethel High School track in the amount of 135,000, and the purchase of a VenTrak mower for the Park and Rec Department in the amount of 28,408 dollars. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Go send, send me copies of this.
Yeah. No, so what that does, let me see, okay, so that eliminates new business item number three, number four, and number six. We have several other items to consider. Marty, can, is it even allowable that, you know, for things coming up in the next fiscal year that we vote on them tonight, or do we have to wait till the fiscal year starts?
I do, you vote on it, you can't do anything to the fiscal.
Yeah, you can't actually take action on it, it's all done, right? Okay.
Basically, we don't have the money for it, so.
Yeah, the money hasn't been allocated yet.
It's like Cinderella.
What's that?
It's like Cinderella.
Yeah.
So these three things that you just did, they're all in existing budgets or previous budgets.
Yes, that's correct.
It's available money, right?
Yeah.
And what, how much was left in to that?
14,000, see where the green is? So this would, this would take our capital non-recurring balance for the current fiscal year down to 14,089. And if you notice, on the spreadsheet, I'll just move that up a little bit, my spreadsheet carries it over to the next year, because you can, that's the, the beauty of CNR is that it can be, can be spread around. Now, do you, do you wish to consider any other items, or is that something you want to think about in the two weeks we have to the next meeting?
I'm uncomfortable, okay? Because we, you're putting the cart before the horse here.
Okay, all right.
Well, we have this to look at, too, Matt, so.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's kind of what I thought.
Move it along quicker.
All right.
While we have it.
Okay, I did have a conversation with Dr. Carver about the marching band uniforms, that's a six-month lead time, so we can't get them into this upcoming season anyway, so there's no urgency on that, as long as we don't get 60 years.
And I saw the numbers a little bit more, 64,000?
Yes, we got an updated quote.
54,000, 291.
I would like to give you a little more background to that.
Sure.
So, and, and if you would consider the second part of it, being the cooperative, national cooperative.
Oh, yeah, we're going to, yeah, that's, that's on there anyway.
Yeah, because, so these, these uniforms, there's a lot of design and development that, you know, your band director spends time with the company. So I've used, and you've used, national purchasing cooperative agreements before, and what they do is they go out nationally and they, they bid different topics. So this, this group, Buy Board, did, very few do band uniforms, so this group does band uniforms, and they had, they had about 30 responses. They do give more than one award, so, but DeMulan was, was one of the awarded companies, and that is one of the major companies in the country, and the one that our band director would like to, to use. So what I'd like, at least at this point, to set us in motion is, I gave, and when we get to it later, would be to approve that we join Buy Board as a municipality, there's no cost.
There's no cost to join?
There's no cost to join, only the vendors selling things pay a fee.
Oh, okay.
To be through them.
So it's sort of like buying something on a, on a credit card, the, the vendors pays the fee, correct?
Pay the fee, yeah.
Okay.
And this is, I mean, there are huge amounts of Texas and across the country that buy through this, this group, so it's not just our buying power or our bidding process. We did it for the seats at the high school auditorium, we did it through a different national cooperative, cooperative purchasing group. So I, I did put a resolution together, when you get to it later, and I did make it subject to Marty's review, you know, authorizing Bob Kozlowski to, to do the paperwork, but subject to Marty's review. But that would allow us then to purchase through Buy Board, and, and then we could take advantage of their buying power, their national buying power.
Okay.
And, and that would, I also put a bid waiver in, because I can't just use a national, we don't have that as an accepted practice in the charter, but that's the reason I would ask for the bid waivers, because I was using an alternate way of bidding.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so there were two steps.
All right, well, the bid waiver, we don't have to do till we actually do the purchase, so.
I would, I prefer that you allowed that tonight, just.
I don't, I don't think we have the language for it tonight, though. I've got the resolution for.
And you have, I, you have, you have the form with the request for the bid waiver, too.
It's in.
Is that it?
It's all in there, yeah.
Only because if, if you do all of that, and depending on how the end of the year pans out, if I can move forward in a different store, so I would like to have the legwork done.
It's right here, Marty, had a chance to look at it.
Yeah, you know, well, you know what, I missed out on.
I haven't even made a decision on that, I haven't had time to look at it, sorry. Dion did send it to me.
I'm sorry.
Okay, all right, if it's okay with you guys, we'll jump to item number 10 under new business, is that all right?
But honestly, Matt, even if Marty needs time to look at that, if you do it two weeks from now, I'm not behind.
Well, we can, we can do that subject to council review.
Okay, fine.
Okay, all right, so we're going to jump to new business item number 10, which is authorization to participate in the Buy Board. So I'll read the motion, be resolved, that the town of Bethel, Fairfield County, Connecticut Board of Selectmen has elected to join the National Purchasing Cooperative, operating as Buy Board, a program created for the benefit of governmental entities and school districts nationwide. Board of Selectmen authorizes the town to enter into the National Purchasing Organization inter-local agreement with Buy Board, and authorizes town comptroller, Mr. Kozlowski, to execute said agreement, subject to town attorney review and approval.
Second.
Okay, any, any discussion?
Is this just for buying the band uniforms?
Well, you can use, once you join, that's an option to go, but you still would have to get a bid waiver, if it's, if it's a large item.
Well, yeah, right, right.
Well, yeah, because that's the problem I have with the bid waivers, and, you know, I understand the consortium that, you know, they're, they're going out and getting all these prices from everybody, but, you know, is there anybody in the local area that bids to these people?
Well, the, all the ones that bid in this instance are, are national-based companies.
I don't know, over the past few months or years, we've been doing a lot of bid waivers, so, I'm just concerned that that's the way it's going, and, and we're getting away from the, the normal bidding process for the town purchasing.
Well, in the, in these cases, I, I actually would recommend joining these organizations, because you have the purchasing power of, of a national group going out and bidding. So I think it brings very competitive pricing to a town the size of Bethel. But we also participate in local consortiums, we still participate in the crack consortium here in Connecticut, with about another 50 school districts right here in Connecticut. So we, we do try to piggyback a lot of times, so that we get the more competitive pricing.
Okay. If, if we didn't do the bid waiver tonight, is that something that could wait two weeks?
That could wait two weeks, yes.
All right. You know, it's interesting, to your point, Rich, with, with more and more pressure from the state to regionalize.
Yes.
And to buy, and to, and to join buying groups to save money, we're going to run into this problem more and more, that it doesn't, that these prices don't fall within our relatively low guidelines, but that's something we'll have to deal with farther down the road. So we have a motion on the floor to join Buy Board, subject to council approval, any other comments?
No.
All right, those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. So then, let's see.
Excuse me, Matt, can I ask a Terry question?
Yeah.
Do you have, do you have the paperwork from Buy Board?
I, I have it to send you, yeah, I have it set for you.
I'm talking about.
The interlocal agreement.
The bid as well. I'm talking about for the, there are a bid for.
You know what, why don't I scan an email at you tomorrow, so it's all in one place.
All right, well, then to clean up the rest of the, the capital non-recurring items, I'm going to make a motion that we table to the next meeting, new business items number 1, 2, 5, 7, 9, and 11. And that, those are, those are, just for the record, the bid waiver on the marching band uniforms, approval of the funding for the marching band uniforms, approval of the funding for animal shelter renovations, and the Bethel Police Department radio purchase, and the South Street Firehouse water line revamp, which are all scheduled for capital non-recurring to whatever.
Can you make that motion?
Yeah.
I'll second, but discussion, on, on the same thing for the water line, there's only one bid?
You mean for the firehouse?
For the firehouse, yeah, for the.
No, there's two bids.
No, there's a, there's a couple.
There's the one before, the one on.
Well, there's one for the interior plumbing, and one for the water line.
That has to be reviewed, because that number that's on that sheet is too high. Kelly actually got a price that's lower.
Yeah, so.
In fact, I, I.
Oh, that's, we're tabling that, but that.
Yeah, we'll have them at the meeting, so you can, you can ask questions.
Okay.
I didn't think we'd get to that item tonight, anyway. Okay, so we have a motion to table those items. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries.
Can I, before we move on, can I just ask Terry a question?
Sure.
You, you say we don't pay anything, but the, the vendors paid to the consortium, you know, like this, this one that we just approved, Buy Board. So theoretically, does that raise the price of a product, because the vendors are paying into it? Or we're still getting a great deal on it? I mean, is.
Oh, I think you're getting a very good deal on it, because I think half of Texas buys through this, this group, so I, I think that the, the volume is what drives the pricing.
Have you got quotes for, with all this consortium, for those, you know, band uniforms?
I can, I can ask that, I can ask for.
I think that would be the proof in the pudding.
Yeah.
The reason why let's, let's buy those.
We're skeptical, we're skeptical.
Yeah, I'm going to tell you, though, I do believe in these national cooperative purchasing groups, I mean, I even went, I don't know if they'll do it or not, but I went to the Charter Revision Committee and said, you know, I think it's a way to go, I think you should put it in that it's an allowable way to go, because I'm not a purchasing agent, you know, and, and so when they write, you know, when you're going out for these technical things, I mean, I'm paying somebody, right, to help with some of these technical bids that we're doing. If I went to a national purchasing organization and they were covering things, I mean, they have people, that's what they employ, they employ people that know the technical side of how to do all these bids. So I, I think you get, I think you get an opportunity to really get better pricing.
Yeah, I understand it, but the only thing is that there's enough of a backlash to say, hey, you're not getting multiple bids.
Well, they are getting multiple bids.
But they are.
They are, but we don't know.
Yeah, we'll see it, yeah, yeah.
Right, they had 30 responses.
Oh, I understand.
And I see that they'll send you a uniform before you finalize the purchase order. And I see that they'll send you a uniform before you finalize the purchase order. Is that how it is? I mean, what if you, they send you the sample uniform and it's a piece of junk? I mean, I just thrown that out there.
Well, there are three big names in band uniforms. Fruchoff, Stanberry, and DeMoulin. And they are all, they are all quality.
Okay.
Those three are.
All right, so it comes from somebody like those.
You're talking high schools, colleges, those are the three big names in band uniforms.
You know where I'm going with that. It's not something we're getting from China, that somebody's making a sweatshop in China.
You know, I will ask them where they're made. I will ask them.
Yeah, okay, well, it's.
If they're made in China, we're in big trouble. You might get it for years.
It's gonna cost another forty percent.
Yeah, yeah. All right, thank you, Terry, for.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Okay, all right, then I'm gonna go to, skip to new business item number eight, which is actually, where do I do this?
It'll be seven.
Seven, right. Nope, yeah, seven. Consideration of approval of the 2019 Water Main Replacement Project to forward to Board of Finance and for special town meeting. This is the project that was just passed up by the Public Utilities Commission, subject to drinking water fund revolving loan, revolving water fund loan. But we have to go through the motions up here, too. This is from the enterprise funds. But I'll make a motion that we approve the 2019 Water Main Replacement List on behalf of the Public Utilities Commission, submitted by Public Works Director Tom Villar.
Second. Do you need, you need the amount of money?
Yeah, I'm just looking for it on the.
It was nine hundred and eighty thousand. I don't know if it was any dollars after that. Nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand.
Nine ninety-eight, right.
You have the list of streets that it includes. I don't know if you.
What's that?
You have the list of streets also in your packet. You have that information in your packet. That's the dump truck info.
Yeah, it's in here.
Towards the back. No, flip one more, Rich. Probably the last.
One more? Oh, it's on the back page, on the back page. Is that on staple ticket?
Nope.
Is that it right there, next seat?
This is, oh, there it is, yes, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Okay, so to add to the motion, Mansfield Street, Maple Lane, Pleasant Street, Grassy Plain Terrace, Highview Terrace, and Oakland Heights would be in the 2019 Water Main Replacement. So those in favor?
The Maple Lane was an alternate.
From the last time, yeah.
Well, it's still an alternate.
Oh, it is?
Because if the bids come in over nine hundred and ninety-eight, nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand, we've dropped, so just clarify that Maple Lane is an alternate.
Okay, so I'll just restate the streets, then Mansfield, Pleasant, Grassy Plain Terrace, Highview Terrace, Oakland Heights, and alternate Maple Lane as an add at all.
Okay, and I'm sorry, you said nine ninety-eight for the amount?
Yeah.
Nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand. Okay, so, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries.
What date will that be?
Well, that's, that's when I'll make a motion that we establish a date of the special town meeting for June eighteenth, twenty nineteen.
June what?
June eighteenth, one eight, at six thirty P.M. in Meeting Room A.
It would be before your, it would be before that Board of Selectmen meeting.
Yeah, that would be before a regular Board of Selectmen meeting.
Okay. Is that subject to?
Subject to approval by the Board of Finance. Yes, thank you. Did you, anybody second that?
I thought I did, second.
You might have, I can't hear, sorry. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries.
I second, I seconded before we did Maple Lane thing.
All right, all right, so I apologize for jumping around. This is a little confusing, but that's, that is my fault entirely. So we tabled the radios.
Number twelve.
Yeah, tabled the South Street Firehouse. So I'll put a motion on the floor that we, I'll put the motion on the floor, then explain what this is. Will we approve, subject to Town Attorney Review, the A and E Services Group contract to provide services related to small cities grant processing?
Second.
Okay, so, as you guys know, that over the years, we've gotten small cities grants that were funneled through Phyllis's office to grant money for low-income folks, mostly seniors, to keep, to be able to stay in their homes and to fix them up. And the way this works is they are not required to repay the loans until such time as the property is sold. Or they, you know, they're, they're able to pay it back. In most cases, that happens when the property is sold. And then that money comes back into the town and it can be reinvested. It can be re-loaned to other people. So it's been a very good program, very popular program. This was administered for us for many years by Larry Wagner Associates, who also works with the Housing Authority. Mr. Wagner has retired. So after interviewing about six different outfits who can provide the service, a group of people, I think it was Phyllis and Ann Skankow and Bethka Bagna, recommended A and E Services. So Phyllis has negotiated a contract and forwarded that to Marty. Marty, you said they've incorporated your concerns. Okay. So all we need to do to move forward with this is to approve the contract and then we can go back in the business of loaning money to folks who need help with their homes. Any questions?
What kind of, I think she has money already that's coming.
Yeah, she does.
From the program, for a couple hundred thousand, as a matter of fact.
How much?
Thank you, it's up to a couple hundred thousand.
Yeah, it is. Okay, any other questions? Here you go, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that carries, I can sign that later on. All right, moving on to old business. Consideration of extending the Religious Holiday Committee, completion of meetings to June twenty-sixth, twenty nineteen. If you remember, the charge we gave, the Religious Display Committee wished to have their work done by June first. And because of travel plans, it was not possible for them to squeeze in the meetings. So I just wanted to make it formal and allow them to continue to meet till June twenty-sixth. It's when they estimate they'll be done. So I'll put a motion on the floor that we extend the date to June twenty-sixth. Any questions?
No.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Item number two, consideration of acceptance of open space, Seven Sunset Hill. Marty, you wanna bring something in?
They have the map there. I don't know if it was marked on the computer. You see, the left-hand side, you'll see an open space that says, and it kind of runs open. It's over three acres of land. This has been hanging around for a long time. The reason why, there's a lot of confusion. Mr. Cody, Donald Cody, who was part owner of it, he passed away. There were some deeds that were done, they were done incorrectly, just a real. So anyway, I've taken, I've spent like four or five hours trying to figure out what's gotta be done here. I finally have it figured out. They've given me probably eighty-five percent of what I've asked for. And I just want to be able to finish it up. So maybe you could just, the only thing I'm really gonna need is a new deed from them. That's off. But everything else, I've discussed this at length with the assessor's office. So we're ready to go. I just, like I said, need the final deed and then pull that off.
Okay. Well, I'll put a motion on the floor that we accept for open space. The lot owned by the Coates family, Seven T, also known as Seven Sunset Hill Road, one forty-seven, hundred and ten, hundred forty-seven thousand, hundred and ten square feet, three point three seven seven acres. Does there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other questions for Marty?
Just want to put, subject to final documents approved.
Okay, subject to final review by Town Attorney and review and approval. Okay, got that. Great, any other questions?
What are we gonna do with that property?
Nothing.
Nothing. Until that, this is my philosophical argument that I have all the time. Just because planning and zoning says we want accepted as open space, I don't think you have to take it. I don't know why you would want it anyway, but that's my opinion. But this has been going on for a while. I've mentioned this before about, you know, if the town doesn't want it, then they should give it to a private organization. But.
Is it buildable?
No.
No.
Is it usable for?
They never get usable property away.
Yeah.
Well, I know, I'm just looking at just this. If it was, they would pay the fee instead. But this, you gotta remember, this was approved several years ago. And it just kind of.
Fell between the cracks.
Never, never got to me, you know, until like five or six months ago, when I started checking the title, I realized, you know, now I knew why it didn't get to me because of the things I needed to clean up.
There's just two little east access.
Yeah.
Paul, you see these two little access here? One's onto F. Panties Lane and the other's onto Sunset Hill.
Okay, yeah, okay. I see, I'm looking at this here, I'm looking at that.
Yeah, that's the property.
Ah. And then Mr. Cody passed away, which caused problems, I mean, you know, so. Dog run.
Well?
Dog run.
Do you?
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
So did the Board previously vote to accept this?
They accepted, they voted on this subdivision with the open space two or three years ago, four years ago. I mean, what's the date of the map there?
Oh, it's gotta be long time ago.
Yeah, it's longer than that. I think all that, just about all the.
Two thousand and six?
Yeah, that's how long, nobody followed up on it. Until I, I think what's happened is someone went to, someone went to sell one of those pieces up there and subtitle searcher brought up the fact, you guys haven't even completed your subdivision, you know. So that's what, all of a sudden, it's gotta be taken care of.
Well, what happens if we decide we don't want it?
Things gotta go back to planning and zoning. You gotta, you gotta, I have another one I have, we're getting off the subject, but I've gotta do the thing for the EDC. I keep, I've been trying to get to it. We, because we already own the property, we have to give one point, we have to commit one point seven acres of the park over there to open space.
Right.
Problem is, we don't do a deed because we're not transferring it to anybody. We have to do what they call a declaration, declare it to be open space. And I said to, I said to the planner, I said, how do you want it? She says, what do you mean? I said, well, how do you want it? There's all kinds of open space. You know, I said, we see it all the time where they just transfer it and it says open space, but it doesn't tell you what you can and you can't do with it, you know. So, I mean, I'm just gonna put down that it's passive open space. You can walk through it, you can, you know, that's about it, you can't do anything else. So I gotta get that done, too, so that'll be coming up shortly, too.
Question is, what do we do with it?
Yeah, what do you do with it?
Well, you got that through subdivisions all over town. You got little parcels.
If the land's any good, Paul, they opt out and pay the money to build and have it a lot to sell. They pay the fee. But if it's not, they don't want it.
Actually, you're losing tax dollars to them.
Yeah, well, the other thing you could do is you could, it's a policy statement by the Board, you could send them a letter and tell them that unless it's contiguous to other larger parcels of open space of the town, you would prefer that, like on this, anything that's smaller than X, go to private organization for open space.
Or they just changed the lot lines and.
Absorb it.
Absorb it.
No, they can't do that.
They can't, because they gotta have it.
The subdivision where it says they gotta give ten percent of the space. So, now that I messed up your motion.
So, so out of this subdivision, it's just this little plot on the left.
Yeah, it's three point something acres, that's correct.
Here it is here on the.
Yeah.
And then, so see those short accesses, looks like a driveway.
Yeah. Well, that, this is, this is this whole thing. That's what shows that, but what we're talking about is.
Where's Sunset Hill? Who's that, Panties Lane? So the hill goes up that way.
Yeah, it looks like there's two accesses. If you look on the west side, it's a little strip there that's off of Sunset Hill. And then it's, then it's off of the driveway.
So Sunset's over here.
Yeah, so it's this.
Yeah, because there's a house here.
It's a really odd shape. There's already a conservation, isn't there, you see it?
Yeah, there's Sunset Hills right there. And then F. Panties comes down like that. So we're just talking about this little corner.
Well, it goes, it goes from the driveway right along the bottom property line into like a triangle, and then it barrels it, goes up to a box.
You're right, Paul, that's that piece of property there.
Yep.
It's here. I don't know if you can see, it's this part right here.
Yeah, yeah. And it's approved by planning and zoning and everything and.
Yeah, well, you know what it does?
It creates a legal hassle.
Yeah, it would create a hassle, plus it gives the other residents here some assurances that what we in, we're building, right?
Well.
There couldn't be anyway, though.
Yeah, there couldn't be anyway.
All right, well, they approved it in two thousand and six.
We have a motion, second.
It's probably not generating more than a few bucks worth of tax income.
You said it, Rich.
Yeah, it's probably all.
Dollar here and call that.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
If you want for anything else, it's probably got some of those turbos that are railing.
But as you said, Marty, we, maybe we should send a notice to planning and zoning that, you know, if it's not contingent, adjacent to another piece of property that.
Depending on the size.
Yeah.
All right, well, any other questions? We have a motion on the floor to go ahead and take it anyway. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Okay, so final item on old business is consideration of property acquisition. Do we still need to have that discussion?
Well, yeah, let's.
All right.
And then we can come out and.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we enter executive session at seven fifty-four, inviting in Dionne Craig and Marty Waller.
Just.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, as soon as we, here, you know what? You can have the screen back, I will, I will go ahead. Cancel this thing. Want to exit this program, yes.
And you gotta switch that thing back for something.
Yeah. Executive session at seven fifty-eight. Are we live? Okay, so we're out of the executive session. There will be no action taken on that item, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
Totally.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries, thank you very much.